Council meeting, Monday, July 28th, 2025. Officially called the order at 7:37 PM.
Councilwoman.
At Lincoln Heights Municipal Building.
Sorry.
Go ahead, I'll roll call, please.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Present.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Present.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Present.
Councilwoman Tanya Key. No response. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Present.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree. No response. Vice Mayor, we currently have five who are present, two who are absent. We do have a quorum, and Mayor Mumfree is stuck in traffic.
Yeah, I was stuck in it yesterday, so I understand, coming back from a day before Saturday. Okay, so we have Pastor Mary Lehman of St. Simon's that is going to give us the opening prayer for the day, so you are ready there.
Well, good evening, God, Creator of all things. I give you thanks for this rain which refreshes the earth and for your Spirit which refreshes us. May your Spirit be present together in our gatherings and may we listen keenly for her voice as she leads us and guides us to be good stewards of the responsibilities you've given us to care for and look after the citizens in the Village of Lincoln Heights. Amen.
Amen.
Beautiful, thank you. Will we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Pastor Mary for that refreshing prayer. When rain that refreshes the earth, that's powerful. Okay. Following the journal. Following of the journal for committee of the whole meeting minutes for July the 14th, 2025, and for regular council meeting minutes of July the 14th, 2025. Is there a motion to accept with any corrections?
Motion.
The motion by Ms. Baber, second by who?
Second.
By Ms. uh...
Councilwoman Hinkston.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? There are no questions, all in favor. Use your voting sign, aye.
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 We do have a mic, and all those eyes need to go into that mic. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, announcements. We'll start on the end with Ms. Councilwoman Hinkston.
I have no announcements.
No announcement. Councilman Mumia.
Uh, the, Respect My Block, uh, this month will be...
Would you put it into the mic?
For the month of August.
There you go.
Will be on the 12th. Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month.
August the 12th.
Mm-hmm.
Second Tuesday in the month, time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Invite everybody out, so you can get some good information. They're doing a terrific job. We need you to invite others to come and find out what's going on in the Village of Lincoln Heights with taxes and what else are you doing for this coming?
We'll talk about the taxes, the CRA, and any subject that they are interested in.
Okay, thank you for that. Ms. Baber, Councilwoman Baber, do you have any announcements?
Um, no announcements at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes, I'd just like to report that, um, we had our safe beer in the park on Saturday. Uh, we had about twenty individuals show up. Uh, we served ice cream and popcorn and water. Those who did come enjoyed it. It was a Midsummer's Night dream. Um, I think it was one of the better, um, plays that we had. Um, so although it was not, uh, had the attendance we expected, the heat and the, um, expectation of rain, we believe kept, um, a lot of people away. And so we're just still appreciative of, um, Able Building Systems and, um, Youth Academy for their sponsorship and for the Village of Lincoln Heights. So thank all those who helped out. Uh, we are having the pantry at, um, sponsored by St. Simon's and Omega Phi Phi Fraternity this Saturday, um, from eight, well, really nine to eleven. Um, it will be held at 1401 Stephens, the Lincoln Heights Health Center. We'll be there serving again from nine to eleven. If anybody wants to volunteer, we ask volunteers to come at, um, at 7:30. And then on September, I'm sorry, August 9th, we will have our back to school at the Health Center that we do every year. So if you are not a patient, if your children have not been immunized, we ask that you contact, um, the Health Center to get your child registered, uh, for that. But any child can come and participate in the activities that will be held outside. And that will start, immunization start around eight o'clock, and then all the other activities start around ten.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, and I want to thank you for, uh, what you do with the arts out here. We definitely, uh, need that, so continue to do that. I would like to have been here to support it. I had out of town guests, and of course you had activities going on.
Everywhere.
All day, everywhere. There was something for everybody, you know, so hopefully next time you will schedule it, uh, not around the...
We have to schedule based on what is available.
Jazz festival time.
Yeah, we have to schedule it based on what's available. But I do also want to mention, um, the Lincoln Heights Valley Boosters event for, um, Coach Paul Blackwell. It was tremendous. About a hundred and thirty people attended at St. Monica's. Uh, they gave Mr. Blackwell and all the coaches and the cheerleading coaches. Um, they're just do in terms of everything that they have done, uh, for so many of us in the Village of Lincoln Heights and our children. And, um, the mayor did, uh, provide a proclamation, uh, which I read. Um, and it was just, it was a wonderful event, brought tears to everybody's eyes, so.
Okay, uh, thank you. I have two announcements. One is the Day of Love that is on the last Sunday in the month, so you don't have to worry about the, uh, the date. It is the last Su- uh, Sunday in the month. It is going to be on Lindy. And it's, uh, it's like a festival-type atmosphere. Did anyone in here go last year? If you did, raise your hand up, you know. It's a beautiful thing. It's a day of worship, uh, food and fun. So, uh, please come out and participate. If anyone in here needs a booth, uh, see me and I'll give you a, uh, number to call. If you want to distribute some information, then that is free. But if you want to sell something, there is a, uh, a small charge to that. If you need any information, let me know. It'd be a wonderful opportunity. Okay. Uh, the second thing, of course, National Night Out, uh, coming up on the second Tuesday, so you don't have to worry about the date for that. That's the second Tuesday in August and...
First Tuesday.
I mean, I'm sorry, the first Tuesday. Thank you, my sidekick over here. Uh, the first Tuesday in, uh, August. And this is the flyer. Did you print any of these to put out there?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see them, they're out on the counter. Pick them up, so you know what's going on. Come down, it's right down here, and again, it's free. If it's free, it should be for me, right? So come down and, uh, they're gonna serve hot dogs and hamburgers and chips and music and what's the...
Kona Ice.
Thank you, so I won't mess up the name. Kona Ice will be here to give out, uh, free, uh, frozen, uh, desserts or whatever you call them, you know. So, uh, spread the word, because we do need the community to come out. And then where those fans at? Bring them, bring those fans down and let's get it on in the middle of the street. Uh, Fireman and Police is sponsored by, uh, uh, combination of Lincoln Heights and them, and the, uh, police and fires will be here. And they're gonna bring a, a car down and, and tear it up, tell you how you can get someone out, show it, show you, and there will be other fun activities out here. So spread the word. We need people to come down and see what's, what we're doing down here, you know, so. I think that's it for me, yes.
I have a question. So are we doing the parade?
Yes.
That would come under her.
Okay.
Um, I would do that under mine now, unless somebody else says so.
Okay, I think that's it for me. Ms. Randolph, the mayor's not here.
Right, going into the regular agenda, it will start with me with the communications from council. Um, there are a couple of things I wanted to announce. The first thing is that, piggybacking off of what Councilwoman started, uh, Mitchell started to say was the Labor Day Parade is coming up. That's going to be on Saturday, August 30th. We're still accepting any kind of applications. We're looking for cheerleaders, we're looking for folks who are in bands or, um, anything like that. We have, excuse me, the, um, excuse me. The application is out there in the lobby. Also, it's online. And if you want to contact me, you can call me at 513-733-5900, extension three. That's one announcement. Then, of course, um, Woodlawn in Lincoln Heights, the CSO Brady Block Parties, that's coming up this Friday. Is that right? Yes, this Friday, August 1st. It starts at 6:30 over in, um, Woodlawn Community Center. That's 150 Woodlawn Boulevard. It's Woodlawn in Lincoln Heights. It's always a good time. Um, and I think it's free. It is free, so bring your family. It starts at, I think it's at 6:30. Concert begins at 7:45. They usually have booths out there, activities for the kids and things like that, but it's really nice. Another one is a summer pop-up market, summer pop-up market, Saturdays. Uh, the next one is gonna be August the 9th, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM at Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church, which is 9991 Wayne Avenue. And also, in the month of August, council will be in recess. Our next, um, uh, when I say, I think it's the 18th, is it 8th? The second Tu- uh, second Monday of September is when we are back in from recess. I'm trying to remember that date of September the 8th. Thank you. So September the 8th, um, council will be back in session unless there's an emergency meeting. So this will be our official last one until September the 8th. And I believe that's all for me, Vice Mayor, as far as announcements.
Uh, thank you. Uh, okay, I want to make a, a motion to move hearing from the public, uh, to number seven, eight, wait, can't do eight. After item seven. Is there mo- is there a second to that?
Second.
Then moved in second to move item, uh, uh, hearing from the residents to after seven. Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four. Have to wait for Ms. Mitchell to return. Okay. Okay.
Ms. Mitchell, were you here when the motion was made to amend?
To amend?
We amended the agenda to ru- to move the residents up to, uh, to speak now.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Were you in here when that motion was made?
No, I was in here.
So let's, so we didn't have a quorum.
Need to do the motion again?
Let's do it.
Okay, we'll wait for Ms. Lisa to come back now. The people are taking short vacations. Were you going to do this tonight?
Yep.
Where?
Okay. We're gonna take that motion back for right now and allow, um, Ms. Mitchell, do we have to amend it to?
We can do it in miscellaneous, as long as I can give my support.
Okay, great. No problem. Okay. And make a motion to, uh, amend the agenda to hear from the residents after number seven. Is there a mo- is there a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
We're waiting on you, dear. Say aye.
Okay, but ac- silence is acquiescence, but, okay, yes, I agree.
Aye. I'm gonna put you in time now. Okay. Oh, the motion passed. Anyone say, uh, nay, no, yes, no? We okay? All right, let's move forward then. Uh... This was done. We miss you. Okay. Communications from, uh, Village, uh, no, we have another one we got to do down here. Motion to, um, move Resolution 76 to reverse them, to put 75 under 76.
I thought it was after number 11.
So we, we can do this a number of ways, Ms. Mitchell, um, and the Vice Mayor and I just talked about it. Uh, it seemed like the easiest thing to do would be to just flip 76 and 75, because then we would move right into item 11, so at that time, the motion can be made.
I, I understand, I understand what you're thinking. You want to move it down and put that in between.
I mean, so if there's questions about 75.
Right, so you can do a motion to go into executive session at any time. You don't have to wait for it to appear on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
But so that we are not holding up, Mr. Dieters is here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not holding up Mr. Dieters. The thought was to flip 76, which is the gas aggregation, with 75, so that Mr. Dieters could come up, do his presentation on gas aggregation. Council could then take a vote on R. 76, which is the gas aggregation resolution. And then after that, Mr. Dieters is welcome to stay if he likes, but if he needs to leave, he could leave. And then we will entertain R. 75, which is the manager agreement. And at that time, a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a public official can be made.
Okay, any other concerns?
So, yeah, that's okay with everybody. I think the Vice Mayor's getting ready to motion to...
Yeah, I'm motion to flip, I'm making motion to flip seventy, uh, Resolution, uh, 2025-R-76 and, um, Resolution Number 2025-R-75.
I second it.
You second it? Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any questions? There are no questions, all in favor, please say. Do I need to roll call for this?
She usually does.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? None? Motion passed, okay. So now that we've amended the agenda, we can move forward, but we did skip over, uh, uh, communications from Village Solicitor Deepak Desai. Uh-uh.
Well, that's where it's supposed to be given, but that's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Desai.
Um, so I have no communications for council this evening. Thank you, everybody.
You maybe do that and then have anything.
Ms. Mitchell has said that normally she would go after that, so we're gonna go ahead on and let her do that. Do we have to amend it again?
Yeah, although I thought Ms. Mitchell's idea of doing it under miscellaneous business probably...
I was gonna put it there because we thought yours was gonna be lengthy.
Yeah, so what, what I would just maybe suggest, so we don't have to do another amendment, it would come up naturally under miscellaneous.
That's fine.
And that would allow us to get through the business of legislation, if that would please council.
It pleases me.
It pleases me.
Thank you. So we're moving, uh, forward with our guests for today, our, our residents that want to come up and speak. Uh, Pastor, uh, Mary, if you don't mind me calling you that, I believe you are here to, uh, talk to us about something. Come up, please. Uh, and tell us who you are, why you're here, and who you represent.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council. Thank you for welcoming me to your meeting this evening. My name's Reverend Mary Lehman, and I'm the pastor at St. Simon's Episcopal Church here in Lincoln Heights. Um, I've been the pastor there for almost seven years now. And, um, I'm here to share with you something that we are doing, and, um, uh, it's, uh, something we are, um, we're, we're working towards on behalf of the Village of Lincoln Heights and the surrounding communities, and we're just looking to seek your, um, interest, see if you're interested in partnering with us in this project. So, um, uh, I, um, am aware of some of the things that have happened, of course, here in the village, um, in more and more recent memory, and how they've tapped into some of the older history, especially the conflict and the, and the, um, and the hurt that has happened between Lincoln Heights and Evendale. Um, that that's, that has hap- that happened, you know, decades ago, but it continues to be a wound that, um, that interrupts the capacity of, um, I think, our community to engage in things that will be helpful and meaningful for all the residents. Um, and we saw this most recently happen, of course, with the incident on February 7th, when the, um, when the neo-Nazi showed up on the bridge and the way that that got handled. Um, and also just the way that it impacted our, our community and our citizens, um, created so much, um, distress. I was here for the meeting, um, on the Monday after that. I was at, I was on the bridge on the Sunday after that event. I went up with the churches and all the community, people who came to pray. And then I was here that night, that Monday afternoon, when we had a meeting here, and I just listened, and I could hear the deep, um, hurt and anger, and, um, and, and I, I had great compassion and, um, concern about, um, how deeply those people on the bridge could disrupt, um, not only the lives of the people in Lincoln Heights, but also the relationships that I think, um, are trying to be nurtured and developed with neighboring communities. And so, um, one of the things that I've just been doing is just been praying about, like, what role can we as, um, as spiritual leaders in the community play to address, um, that, that wound, that old hurt? Um, and are there ways that we can contribute in a meaningful way to, um, to healing that? Recognizing that healing is not, um, a simple thing. It's a profound thing. It's a deep thing. And, um, and so one of the things that, um, that sort of has been percolating inside of me that I've shared with the members of St. Simon's, on both the vestry and then on the Sunday with the members of our congregation, is something, um, that we in the Episcopal Church are pretty familiar with in terms of process. And that is, um, the, the, the value, um, that, um, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission process offered the people of South Africa in the wake of the falling of apartheid and the release of Nelson Mandela from prison, and then the movement of that nation to try to figure out how to move beyond the, um, the deep hurts that race and economic adversity and injustice had sort of perpetrated on a whole country. And that process was, um, facilitated in many ways by the Episcopal community. Um, the leader of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission was Desmond Tutu, who was an Archbishop in the Episcopal Church. Um, and so I wondered if that might not be a process that could find a home here, um, that would offer an opportunity for there to be meaningful expression of, um, of hurt and of, um, and of a call to accountability. Um, one of the things that was, I think, so profound about the Truth and Reconciliation Commission in South Africa is that it not only gave voice to the people who were, um, victims of apartheid and who were able to name how apartheid had done deep injury to them, both personally and economically and socially. But I think in some ways, in an even more significant way, it gave a place for the people who had participated in that injury um, to also give voice to the role that they played and to offer, um, a confession of sorts and an opportunity to say, "I don't want this thing that I participated in to continue to, um, to continue to live in me and to continue to sort of hurt, um, the people in my community." Um, because what we know is that when we engage in violence, it, it injures everybody. Violence doesn't just injure the people who are physically hurt by it or economically impacted by it. Um, I know as a pastor that it also injures the people who inflict it, even if they aren't obviously aware of it. I am aware of the deep moral injury that happens in people when they are put in that place and they make those sorts of choices. And something like the Truth and Reconciliation Commission offers people on all sides of that experience an opportunity to name it and then to let it go. Because at the end of the day, that's really where true healing happens. It's in the letting it go. That's, that's the Greek translation of the word we call forgiveness. Now forgiveness is not a kumbaya thing. Forgiveness is a deeply, profoundly, significantly spiritual practice that only comes at the end of a long process of naming a hurt and of being witnessed and of people acknowledging their role in it. Um, and that is a process that can be facilitated in a meaningful way. Um, and so, right now, um, the Episcopal Church, for a number of years, has been engaged in, um, in what they call beloved community work. Because the Episcopal Church recognizes the role that it has played as a, as a white, um, community, a white church in, um, in slavery and in the ongoing, um, long-term impacts of racism. And we've been sort of blessed, um, for, I don't know, was it 12 years, I think, to have Reverend Bishop Curry be the head of the Episcopal Church, an African-American man who actually served here in Lincoln Heights. And he initiated the beloved community work in our church as a way of inviting the people in our Episcopal community to do some of this work, to name the ways that they have participated in economic and, um, and racial injustice and social injustice. And to, um, and then to say, how do we tell the truth about this? How do we engage in, um, in reconciliation work? How do we engage in reparations work? Um, and, and out of that long process that he's initiated within our congregations, within the Episcopal Church, um, they have set up, um, grants, so that local churches who want to do that work may apply for these grants and find, and, and use those funds to support that work locally in their communities. And so, as I've witnessed, um, what happened here in the wake of the events on February 7th, I wondered if we could apply for that grant and, um, invite, um, somebody through those funds to initiate that kind of a process, to bring people in as leaders who are experienced in facilitating that kind of conversation. in facilitating that kind of conversation, of inviting us to bear witness to one another, to confess our wounds, but also to confess on the part of our white neighbors, brothers and sisters, their role and that they have played in perpetuating that. Not just, you know, so many years ago when all of the incorporation land grab led to such devastating economic injustices, but the way that that has continued to be a part of the story between our communities. Can we move forward and tell that story now with some healing that allows us to move forward so that we can become partners in economic development here, partners in ways that will make a difference in the lives of the people in all of our communities, but most especially, I think, in the lives of the people of Lincoln Heights? So, we are gonna apply for that grant, it's, the grant application is due at the end of August. And I'm here on behalf of the members of St. Simon's, who thankfully have come to sit with me, to seek partners. It's not something that St. Simon's can do by itself, it's something that St. Simon's can initiate and can facilitate, and then can invite other people to be a part of. And we are fortunate to have access to these resources and to apply for them, and if we get them, we would come back to you and we would collaboratively create a process that felt meaningful to everybody involved, because it would need to, it would need to not just become something that was part of the spiritual community, but the political community, and the educational community, and the business community. There's just so many peoples, lives who've been touched in really injurious ways, and we want all of those voices to be included, and we would want to make sure that we invited all those people into the process of figuring out what this kind of a commission would look like. So, I've been in contact with some of the spiritual leaders in our community to see if they would partner with St. Simon's in this process. I've had a very meaningful conversation with Michael Pearl, who runs St. Monica's, as you know. And he has been supported, of course, by the Sisters of the Transfiguration, who are also part of the Episcopal community. And he has offered his support to this process if we get this grant, and he's agreed to have St. Monica's and that community named when we apply for the grant, because truthfully, we're more likely to get the grant if the people who are receiving the grant application see that we have a desire to do this, not just as our own organization, but in partnership with our community. So, really, I'm here tonight to sort of tell you that that's one of the things that we're considering, and to ask if you would, if you would consider partnering with us in this kind of a process that my hope is would move us beyond the woundedness into collaboration and partnership. Open to answer any questions?
So, because we're out in August, what do you need for us to do? Is to have a consensus around the table as to we, this is something that we want to do?
That would be wonderful, if you could have a consensus that say you support this and that you would be interested in being open to partnering with us, that would be lovely.
Doesn't have to be a legislation letter or what? Yeah, we need a support letter.
So, typically, what we would do is we'd come back to our next meeting with a resolution of support.
Right.
We're on recess for the month of August, and I think you said the deadline was the end of August.
It is, it's before you'll be back, I understand.
So, on the fly, my recommendation would be to pass a motion, an oral motion of support, and what is the name of the grant again?
The Beloved Community Grant.
So, a motion by council to support St. Simon's application for that grant.
Okay, that is my motion, what the solicitor said.
I'm not second.
Who's seconded? Ms. Baber? Been seconded by Ms. Baber, are there any questions about what... What they want to do?
I don't have a question, but what I wanna say is that I believe in what you're doing, because hurt people hurt people, but in order to break through when you're hurting, there has to be a foundation of trust for people to open up and communicate very positively. I also know in surrounding communities, I would like to go as for Springdale and maybe give Antora, Pastor Antora Buster, some information about your program, because not only did it just impact the Village of Lincoln Heights, it impacted Springdale, it impacted Sharonville, it impacted other surrounding neighborhoods that go out beside of Frill. And because I am connected to some other pastors, I would like to get your information so that I can give it to them, to invite them to have a conversation with you, to see if they wanna partner with you too.
I would love that, the more people we could have engaged in partnering in this conversation, the more spiritual leaders. I welcome it, I'm grateful, I just wanna say thank you, please, that means so much to me that you would... I agree, it's not just an Evendale, Lincoln Heights conversation, it's a whole sort of valley conversation, and we want everybody in the valley to benefit from this work, and in order for everyone in the valley to benefit from it, we all have to have a voice in how it happens, and I would love to welcome them into that process, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns?
I do have questions. So, Pastor Mary, I think you need to say what the grant will cover, how it will be done, the facilitator, I think you need to...
Correct, so I'm still...
And what our role might be that we, that is, in terms of participating in writing the grant.
Yes, so, at this point, it's a grant that we would be writing from St. Simon's, and we, I'm trying to be in conversation with the grant committee so that I can get clarification from them more fully about the things that they will cover, but what I would like the grant to cover is the cost of hiring a facilitator to lead us through this process. I know that, from talking with people in my own diocese, that there are people in the Episcopal Church in our country who have actually already done this process in other communities. And so, I would be asking the grant to cover the cost of bringing those people into our community. And the role that city council would play initially is that I would list you in the grant as an organization who's agreed to support this process in partnership with us if we were to get the grant. And then, if we get the grant, we would come back to you at that point and begin to talk about the nuts and bolts of exactly what does that look like in concrete ways. I can't tell you yet what it looks like, mostly right now, I'm just asking for your, to put it the only way... I know your moral support, so to speak, so that when I go to the granting committee, I can say that I have come and I've spoken with you, and that you are in support of what we're doing and would like to partner with us if we receive those funds. Does that answer your question?
Yes, all in favor, please say aye. Any nays?
Thank you, thank you very much, and I would be more than happy to meet with any one of you individually or in small groups or partners, just to sit down and have a cup of coffee, a cup of tea, to hear what your concerns are. I mean, I would love to weave those into my application. So, each of you have a different perspective about what will most support this community in this village, and I would love to be able to integrate that into what I write. And so, if you would like to get ahold of me, Councilmember Mitchell has my contact information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak? That's the only person we have for today?
Yes, that was registered.
We can move on to our regular agenda, and I'm looking for something I can't find. Ms. Randolph?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Have you heard anything else from the mayor, is she okay?
Check real quick. No, I just sent her a text earlier to state that we were starting the council meeting, but I haven't... Oh, she says, "Tell you to go ahead," that was at eight oh three.
Okay, eight oh three, she needs to come and explain the resolution that she has that's on the agenda. Okay, let's move to any old business. Any old business?
Thank you again for giving us time on your agenda, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
New business would be the first reading resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-two, Resolutional Waiting Street Improvement Project and Barrett Paving Company, I think that's how you pronounce that. Ms. Randolph?
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-two, Resolution Awarding Street Improvement Project to Barrett Paving Company.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahum Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
We have five aye votes, two that are absent, that motion does pass.
Motion to receive a passage.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Phyllis Baber, roll call vote, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber? Councilwoman Nona Kahum Mumia? Councilwoman Karen Hinkston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
We have five aye votes, that motion does pass.
Emergency clause to apply, let's see, motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber? Councilwoman Nona Kahum Mumia? Councilwoman Karen Hinkston? Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
We have five aye votes, that motion does pass.
Which one did you wanna talk about? Is it the next one? Okay, you wanted to read it first. Okay, supplemental agenda, first reading, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-one.
Are these items appearing on supplemental agenda where they provided to council prior to the meeting?
Yes, Friday. With one exception, though, attorney decide, the Resolution Number seventy-six.
All right, well, that's simple enough, so for seventy-one through seventy-five, we're not gonna need a motion to read by title only, you can just go right into the first reading, unless somebody wants to make a motion to read it by its entirety.
Okay. All right, Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-one, Resolution Appointing Christopher Williams to Serve as Zoning Administrator.
Thank you, Deepak.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, good evening, everyone. So, R seventy-one is a resolution that is tied to the community reinvestment area program the village has going on. Briefly stated, the way our CRA, the Community Reinvestment Area, is working is that we have put timelines in place that are both in the CRA policies, in the purchase contract with survival clauses, and then in a reverter clause within the deed transferring the property. So, one of the most important timelines is that applicants, by and large, have to apply for and receive a building permit within six months of the closing date on the property. The prerequisite to being able to get a building permit, which is issued through Hamilton County, is the local jurisdiction, in this case, the Village of Lincoln Heights, has to issue a zoning certificate. It's a rather simple document, and simply put, it says, you know, Jane Doe wants to build a house on ABC Street, I, zoning administrator, John Doe, have reviewed the zoning for that street, and single-family housing is allowed to be constructed. It seems kind of perfunctory, maybe even ministerial in nature, but it is one of those things that you have to have before Hamilton County Building Department will even consider your application. So, with the mindset that we've put people on a clock, a shot clock, if you will, Don Mercer, who's been with the village for twenty-two years, he has retired, he's seventy-three years old. His last day on the job was June thirtieth. So, as of July first, the village does not have a zoning administrator. Hamilton County had people that had received property from the village with these, with the shot clock running, saying they don't have a zoning administrator, give us our permit, and Hamilton County Building Department said, "We can't do that." And the village has received at least two calls, maybe more, from the Hamilton County Building Department asking what's going on, "Why don't you have a zoning administrator? We can't move forward with any of these applications until we get that zoning certificate." Mr. Lemon, who is the housing officer under the revised code for the CRA program, talked to Mr. Williams, who is our Public Works Director, and said, you know, "The zoning code in Lincoln Heights is pretty straightforward, would it be something you would be willing to do?" And Mr. Mercer, who I then talked to to confirm that that was accurate, said, "Yes." He said, "There's only six or seven zoning districts in Lincoln Heights, unlike, say, the city of Cincinnati, where you have all of these different overlay districts, you have other things that can complicate the zoning and interpretation. Lincoln Heights is pretty straightforward, it's, you know, commercial, industrial, or residential. We have one overlay, and that's here on Stephen." But other than that, he said, "It's not hard for anybody to go through, make sure that they wanna build a single-family house on ABC Street, confirm that ABC Street allows a single-family house." He did say that if there were any kind of applications for an actual zoning change or for a special exception permit, which is essentially a use variance that we get from time to time, that that would be something that Mr. Williams would need help with, and he would be willing to help him if we have any of those type of things come down the pipeline. But bottom line is, Don's seventy-three, he wants to retire. He thinks that the zoning code is straightforward enough that Mr. Williams would be able to look at the relevant address, look at it against the zoning map, and then say, "Yeah, you can build a single-family home on this street at that location." So, Mr. Lemon has asked that while we're waiting to appoint a permanent zoning administrator, that Mr. Williams be appointed the zoning administrator so that the people that have purchased property and that are on a shot clock can get their zoning certificate. So, that's the purpose behind twenty-five dash R dash seventy-one. Any questions from anybody?
Yes, so, Mr. Williams will simply be doing this in addition to his duties as Public Works Director? Or are we paying him, are we giving him compensation to do this?
No one is mentioning compensation to me, and the resolution does not specify any additional compensation.
So, we are to safely presume that there is no compensation before we pass this?
Well, unless council authorizes additional compensation, there's not gonna be additional compensation. So, council would have to authorize that.
All right, and so, with looking at the zoning procedure, I guess my question becomes, what about plans, to see the plans that the individuals have to build?
So, that, I think, is a different issue. So, I think one of the conversations that has come up is that now that the CRA program has been in place and we've seen actually one structure be completed, the thought was, well, maybe that wasn't exactly what council had in mind. So, it may be better, moving forward with sales, to have people actually submit, I wouldn't necessarily say building plans, I don't know that we're gonna necessarily understand those, but more of what is the finished product going to look like? Often what you'll get, say, like, from Habitat for Humanity, where they'll give you sort of what a finished product is gonna look like. But that's a separate issue from this. But that's a separate issue from this, that would require, uh, the village amending its CRA policies.
I, I understand that, so I, I just want to bring that up and then, just to also mention, in case something goes up, we, even though we have a zoning administrator, council, we really need to look, making sure that we have a zoning board of appeals. We need to get that. We need to get that because that might be a problem for us, we gotta, you know, so.
Yeah, I think you had another concern about the person who was sponsoring this.
Um, Mr. Lemon is sponsoring it, but he's a contractual employee, so shouldn't the mayor have sponsored it?
He is the Housing Officer.
But he's contractual, that's what I'm just, I'm trying to understand. Any contractor can offer legislation.
So, yeah, the village does use, uh, independent contractors to provide certain services. Uh, the important thing is how they were, if you will, anointed by council. So, that has lots of ramifications, from insurance coverage, um, to, you know, what they can do. But Mr. Lemon was appointed the Housing Official for the village, which is required under the CRA, uh, program through the revised code. As such, what that gives us is insurance coverage. It also gives him the right, uh, to request legislation be presented to council, which is why on all the documents on the legislation selling real estate, you'll see that it's sponsored by Mr. Lemon as the Housing Officer.
Yeah, I understand that part, okay.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, my concern is that Mr. Williams doing actually two jobs. Something to me is gonna like, like a, like it did before. Um, it's very difficult, and even, do we have qualifications? What is his qualification, have he ever did this before? And I understand that something that should have happened and it didn't happen? I can personally say some things I'm just not comfortable with because it puts us back, takes us back more than puts us ahead of something. And so, that's like you telling me to come to your office and take a case and represent somebody, and I never have before. You, to you, it may seem easy because you have done that. But if I have no knowledge of what I'm doing because somebody says it's easy doesn't necessarily mean it's just like black and white. There are also gray areas. Trying to do two, put it, two jobs at the same time, and that is my concern.
Do you have an answer?
I don't, um, so I'm just the scrivener. I just write what I'm told to write. Um, I did take the, uh, extra step upon myself to call Mr. Mercer because I had concerns about how easy it is to step in those shoes. I have a tremendous amount of respect for Don Mercer. Um, I've been at this job for twenty years, he was here for twenty-two. Uh, my first ten years, whenever there was something complicated that came up with real estate, Don was my go-to person, he always had the answers. Um, Don's a straight shooter, um, you know, and if Don tells me, "Hey, DPAC, this is something that, uh, is pretty simple to do within the parameters that I discussed," um, I would take his word at it. Um, so, it, it's the will of council, this is not something I'm sponsoring, it's not something that I'm advocating. Um, I'm just simply trying to make council aware of the situation for third parties out there that council has put, um, requirements upon, which is, you have to do this in a certain amount of time, they can't move forward. And, um, that's a reality that either gets addressed by Mr. Williams being the zoning administrator or we revisit the fifteen, twenty pieces of legislation that we have put out there selling property and we're going to have to redo them, revise them, I don't know, I haven't thought through that. Because I don't think it's fair to put people on a shot clock and then not give them a ball.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
They, for this position and, and by, uh, the name that would be given, the title that would be given, as a Public Works, um, Director, would this be considered, um, other duties as assigned? Or does he have to have that title?
So, um, I'm not sure how the county looks at it, but I don't know if they would accept something that's signed by the Public Works Director. More importantly, I want to make sure if there's a mistake made, the village has insurance coverage. And the way to make sure there's insurance coverage is to have him appointed to that position of zoning administrator. Does that answer your question?
Need more clarification on that?
And, yeah, it's, it just, yeah, it just seems, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Hinkston. You're having him do two jobs and it could be a conflict between.
I don't know if, I thought Ms. Hinkston was sort of hinting on the time that it would take to do two jobs, and maybe I was hearing her incorrectly.
Conflict of interest, oh, so he doing two jobs on the same time. It's just the, the whole thing, you know, especially when we have been around that, when we have done something and it didn't work and we're trying to do the same thing based on one person doing two very important jobs.
Although, you know, my impression is that being the manager of the village is an all-day job, maybe in a twenty-four-seven job. Whereas the zoning administrator is somebody who wants to build a house on property the village has sold to them, for example, coming and saying, "I want to build this at ten-ten," you know, Congress. Can you tell me if that's zoned for a single family? Don looks, I'm sorry, not Don, uh, Mr. Williams looks at the zoning map, yep, that's single family, and he signs the zoning certificate that the village has, you know, pre-printed. That, you know, just understand there is a difference in the time demands of the job.
So, that would mean they would do it every now and then, when someone come in and want to purchase property?
Not if we got fifteen sold, that's not every now and then, he has to go back and backdate, do those fifteen or twenty properties that we have already sold. So, that's a little time-consuming, and my mindset.
I was talking about, I was talking about the future.
And then, my thing was, is that, um, you know, it wasn't really possible for a person to do two jobs when they were getting paid for it, and now we want this per- now we want a person to do it for free?
You're referring to when he was the appointed interim manager?
I'm not referring to anybody in, in particular, I'm just saying.
Well, you said when, when he was asked to do two jobs, uh, that's the only.
No, that's not what I said. I s- I was saying that it was impossible for a person, not necessarily Mr. Williams, but any person, to do two jobs when they're being paid for both jobs. So, now you're saying you want this person, I'm talking about Mr. Williams, to do his regular job plus do this job, and you're not going to pay him for it?
So, I would just reemphasize, this is not something I want.
No, I'm just saying, based on, uh, uh, the legislat- right here.
This is something that, um, Mr. Lemon has been concerned about because he's the Housing Officer, and he came up with what he thought was a good temporary solution to a problem that the village needs to address.
So, can I ask you, how long have Mr. Lemon been a Housing Officer?
But if I could finish, um, I think you have to look at the roles that people are being asked to, to do. There's a tremendous difference, and to my knowledge, the only time we've ever asked anybody to take on two positions is when we've had the Finance Director serve as the interim manager, or we've had the Public Works Director serve as the interim manager. Manager position is a lot more demanding than the zoning administrator, so I don't think you're comparing apples to apples. Um, so, that is perhaps not the best analogy or comparison to make.
No, I'm just saying, working for free, period.
Do we want to?
Ask Mr. Williams, would he be okay with working for free?
Do we want to do just first reading on this and move on? And, uh, I know.
I didn't hear you.
I said, do we want to just do a first reading on it and move on, bring it back in September? Which means that, that should be some time before, uh, this problem will be resolved.
Matter between now and September, they can hire someone to do the job.
That's true, too.
Okay, want to move it on? Okay, we've already, you did that.
So, first reading only?
First reading only.
Just a point, that person who's hired can't work until council appoints them. So, you can hire someone as a zoning administrator, but council needs to appoint them to that position. So, it's either a special meeting in August or it's waiting until September.
I understand that, if it has to be a special meeting.
So, so, everybody won't be available for the entire summer, so, yes.
So, um, Mrs. Desai, I guess my, my concern is, um, my main concern is, so that, in order to get to issue or deny a zoning certificate for proposed construction, you have to look at the construction, so what are the skills that the, um, zoning administrator would have in terms of looking at the structures and knowing that this is what needs to happen? Is that primarily right now the responsibility of Mr. Lemon?
No, so, the, the Plans Examiner and, um, the people that issue the permit are all county. They're the ones who look at the plans and that are going to compare it to the Ohio Building Code. So, that's not what the zoning administrator's doing.
Okay, but then, so, but will these plans have been looked at by the county and then instruct Mr. Williams that it's okay to give the certificate? That's what I'm trying to understand. You know, let's take into consideration, um, something that was already built that through the CRA, right, that, um, to me, is inappropriate where it is. And had we saw the plans and understood clearly what was going to be built there, because it was built without a certificate. I mean, because if we don't have a zoning administrator, we have that, um, already done, right?
So, are you referring to Mr. Tate's garage?
Yes, yes, and do the other people have permits?
Had a zoning administrator in place at that time.
So, Mr. Mercer approved that?
Uh, he would have given the zoning certificate. And then, the county is going to approve plans based on what's in place. So, really, you know, um, I think your idea of, let's see what the finished product's going to look like, is the best way for council to control what happens with land that council owns.
Right, exactly.
Now, land that council doesn't own, if the zoning code allows for it, that four-car garage can be built.
But we owned it.
Yeah, so that's, you know, that's the thing to understand, you know, is that it's a unique situation when you own the property, you can decide to sell it or not based on what they're going to build. But if you don't own the property, as long as they comply with the building code, they can build what they want.
And they did.
Okay. So, where are we?
I know, yeah, we were due, because that's not what was said, but okay.
Uh, where are we with this, or we going?
Let me just ask this question, uh, Vice Mayor. So, I, I don't have a problem, and you all know I don't have a problem with meeting, but, um, are we, once we get clarification, are we willing to come back for a ten-minute meeting to, to pass this? Or do we want to wait till September? Because I know that we do have, um, individuals who, who want to build and can't get permits. But I think it's worth us getting clarification and then coming back and passing it, um, if, if you're here sometime in August.
I don't have, I don't, I can speak for me, I don't have a problem with it.
With coming back?
Mm-hmm. Do you have a problem?
Because we're going to at least have to know if, if he don't even want to work for free, we don't know that.
Right, so we just, I'm just saying, so once we get clarification, we do the first reading tonight, and then we come back, this, you know, have a consensus on the date, and then come back and pass it or not pass it.
As long as all five show up, as long as you have five, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, we're done with that. We did the first reading, right? Done, okay. You did it?
Yes.
She started off by reading that. Okay, so we are on to?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-three. Resolution Appointing Tanya Perkins to serve as Clerk of Mayor's Court and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Tanya Perkins regarding saying.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, uh, with this, this is with the mayor. And, uh, I have no more information and do not know how to address this, she's not here yet. Uh, so, uh, can we do the first reading and then bring it back? Of course, we will be missing time, but if you have the special meeting, maybe you can put that on there.
Put that on the agenda, just for.
Yeah, put that on that agen- that agenda, so we're going to move, uh, Resolution R seventy-three to?
Have first reading.
The first reading, she did the first reading. Okay. First reading on this, so we'll move forward. If she comes in, maybe she can talk about that. Okay, to the next one, uh, Ms. Randolph?
Village of?
R seventy-four.
I'm sorry. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-four. Resolution Authorizing the Finance Director to transfer monies between object codes formerly known as line items in the general fund.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Councilwoman Mitchell, did you second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Um, no, I thought this went hand in hand with the last one.
Well. That's true, too, but, but if the, if the amount of money, whether we use it all or not, it, you know what I'm saying? It really doesn't.
So, you answered, no?
No, okay. Councilwoman Kahoon Mumia?
If you're hesitant about answering, I believe we can place both of them on the agenda, uh, for the special council meeting. Uh, Mrs. Desai, is that okay?
I think she said yes.
No.
I sound like that was Councilwoman Hinkston.
You say nothing, I was.
So, Vice Mayor, are we saying that Resolution seventy-four will be first only, or what are we saying?
We've got a pending motion, so we've got to complete the vote.
No one said anything.
No.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston?
No.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
We have three nay votes, two I-votes, that motion does not pass.
Motion fails, next, uh, piece of legislation.
Village of?
This is the one, this is R seventy-six, right, because we flipped them, seventy-six and seventy-five?
Yes, thank you.
This one, we're going to need a motion to read by title only.
Okay. I make a motion to read by title only, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-six.
I second it.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoon Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
We have five I-votes, that motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number 2025 dash R dash seventy-six. Resolution authorizing the village manager or mayor to enter into a natural gas aggregation agreement with a natural gas supplier recommended by Energy Alliances, Inc.
Motion to suspend the rules. He spoke to us in, uh?
I did, I have some additional.
Come forward then.
Yeah, pass that out.
Uh, so, I went back and got the performance report and sent it to Ms. Randolph to have it printed off for you, just so we can kind of end the confusion. These numbers come from Duke, and they come from the PUCO. Uh, we just generate the report in a more readable fashion for folks when they get on to the website, our website, so they can see it. So, the first month, so this is the first two quarters of the program, the five, six coldest months of the year. So, that's the number of accounts that participated. The total volume, that's how much energy gas was used, is the next one. The aggregation price, which was our base price, which is point fifty-eight, point nine cents, it's fifty-eight point nine cents. We have to charge sales tax at seven point eight, so that's point oh four six. The last, the next, uh, column is, I think, what may or may not be causing some confusion on people's bills. This is what they call the Duke applicable surcharge. This is the charge that they charge when, um, they either don't meet their costs, and if they've exceeded their costs and collected too much, they have to return that. So, for those months, point oh four three eight five cents is a charge that they have added to everyone's bill for the first six months. So, that is, has really nothing to do with our program or what they paid for the gas. That's their costs, which they're allowed to recover. So our total supply rate for those months, the average was point six seven nine two eight, including the surcharge and the taxes. Uh, the next line, next column is total aggregation costs. The next line is the Duke GCR. That's what they charged their residents in those months for the cost of gas. It's, it's, the GCR stands for gas cost recovery. So for November, it was seventy-one four, December was fifty-seven eight, uh, January is fifty-six four, uh, Feb is sixty-two point eight cents, uh, March is ninety-six point three nine cents, and April was a dollar fourteen twenty-nine. So, that volatility, as you were speaking of before, that's kind of what's in that GCR. So, our, if you look at the very last column, it says the total performance is six point two percent. That's going to be a little higher than that, because we also beat them in May, and May was a colder month. So, residents that were on the program saved thirty-seven forty-one in those six months. And as soon as I have the next quarter, we'll, of course, send it over. So I want to make sure that we're crystal clear on those numbers.
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
No questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So you're saying that, uh, say for instance, December twenty twenty-four, that there was, was not a savings, because it's nine point five, and it's in parentheses?
No, that's the cost, that's the, if you look at every month, so if you, if you look at the total performance, the first month, we were better, but it was only a couple dollars. The second month, we were a little bit high of Duke. The third month, we were a little bit high. Uh, the fourth month, we were a little bit high, but then the fifth and sixth months, when the volatility kicked in, we were a lot significantly lower. So, the program's designed to do two things, hopefully save money, and you're totally correct, because we can't predict whether we're going to do that or not, and we don't make that promise. But we've achieved it in the first half of the year. But the second thing is, people like their bills to be the same. People don't want to get a November cost, or a December cost of fifty-six cents, and then an April cost of a dollar fourteen. And that hurts people's budgets, and that's one of the good things about the program. Whether you like them or not, your, your pricing is going to be stable throughout the year. So, that's, that's the two goals of the program, is hopefully get savings and manage the stability of the costs for folks.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was a motion. I made the motion, who's second that motion, Ms. Randolph?
For, um, title, read by title, it was Councilwoman Baber. And I don't think you did anything with suspending rules yet, because Mr. Dieters spoke.
I started, someone said second, and I didn't get it, so. Uh, motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston?
No.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
Okay, we have three aye votes, two nay, that motion does not pass.
So what happens now?
Everybody's going back to the, everybody, unless you do something again by August tenth, everybody goes back to the utility and pays whatever rate they have.
Up or down?
Up or down, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
To make a motion to go into executive session to discuss employment of a public office.
I second it.
Who moved in second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you need recall, roll call?
She usually does a roll call.
Yeah, do a roll call on that.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston? Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, that motion does pass.
Was it stated what the purpose of the executive session was?
I believe she said to discuss, discuss a public official.
Was that, was that stated when the motion was made?
Yes.
Yes. That begins at eight fifty-four.
You want to know who, who moved in, who seconded?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we stated on the record.
Yes, the same, that, that was here, I read it from there. Okay, from the minutes from last meeting. Okay. What time is that, Ms.?
Eight fifty-four.
Eight fifty-four. Is there anything else I need to say?
Yes. Today's regular council meeting is now back in session, today's date is July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the time is nine thirteen. Roll call?
Thank you, Ms. Desai didn't tell me all that. You didn't give me that information.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Present.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia?
Present.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston?
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Present.
We have five who are present, we do have a quorum.
Okay, I, I make a motion to read, uh?
I think this one we just jump into.
Jump right on into it? Did we get this in a?
Well, they got it today.
Today, so, okay, we got to read by title. A motion to read by title only, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five R dash seventy-five.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Resolution number seventy-five was done Friday, it was resolution seventy-six that was today. I misspoke, I apologize.
Go ahead and read it by time.
Okay.
I didn't, we didn't have a second.
Second.
Okay.
Go read it anyway.
Councilwoman?
Because she just seconded your motion.
I don't know what we're doing.
I didn't withdraw anything, I said, go ahead on and?
Well, you made a motion to read by title, she seconded it.
And she's going to read it anyway by title, that's what I feel.
I got to do a roll call first.
Then we need to do a roll call.
Yeah.
Maybe just, you go ahead and do the roll call.
Okay. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
We have five aye votes, that motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash seventy-five. Resolution memorializing the appointment of Gaines Brown the Third as the village manager and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement, I'm sorry, to execute an employment agreement with Gaines Brown the Third regarding same.
Motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
We have five aye votes, that motion does pass.
Motion received for passage.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
We have five aye votes, that motion does pass.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause. Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hingston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter?
Yes.
We have five aye votes, that motion does pass.
Okay, moving right along to Ms. Lay's business, I believe Councilwoman Mitchell, you do have something you want to present to us.
Yes, I want to give my economic development report.
That report should be on your, in front of you.
This is from the meeting on July seventh, and we had three members present, as well as Mr. Lemon, the CRA housing officer. Um, this covers two months, June and July. Um, in June, we had the sixteen land bank applications put in, and as an update, um, all of those individuals, homeowners, have been contacted, um, by the land bank to review the necessary repairs, and so they will be, um, addressing those shortly. Uh, the chair inquired about the twenty nineteen funds received from First Financial for a different home repair program that the village has not established. Um, the next hurt projects will be on Adams and Jackson, um, closer to, um, Leggett. Alloy's role in the CRA was clarified. The expected revenue for the CRA for the first year is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Donnell Killings expressed, that should say his interest in developing the property at eleven hundred Lindy for mixed use. The required composition for CRA councils was explained. Ms. Calhoun Mumia's respect might block report covered parts of the tax levies, the CRA boards and commissions, and the need for more participation from residents. We also discussed the land use plan. At the July meeting, Alloy's contract and agreement for the CRA has expired. Discussions centered around the need to establish the required tax incentive review committee and the housing council. We are in violation of the CRA regulations. The tax administrator has two people to refer, and the mayor will check with the individual she wants to refer for their interest. Mayor and council need to focus on making recommendations. Reverend Kevin Rainey and Ms. Jamie Hutcheson, the development director, presented more information on Eden Garden with a request to change of location to eleven hundred Lindy. A scale model of the project was also presented. Cook Construction is proposing a twenty-three million dollar, um, budget for the grocery store and the residential units of five floors. Developers were asked to submit, that should say, additional information, and I believe they did miss some. Randolph?
Yes, they did, and I passed that on to council.
Okay, was it, um, by email, or was it a physical?
It was via email.
Okay, thank you. Our action items, one is to appoint the required CRA councils. Council to be informed of planning commission meetings and to review the land use plan for adoption. Recommendations recommend that the planning commission hold joint meeting with council members to review the land use plan. I have a question.
My report.
Yes. Um, Ms. Mitchell, do you know what's going on with, um, the, uh, the Hurts project on Adam and Jackson? Because they're, they're doing nothing.
No, I don't. Um, when you say they're doing nothing, you haven't seen any activity?
None.
Okay, well, I have a, um, I have a, that's the one across the street from you.
The one across the street from me, and then the other one up on Jackson as well.
Okay, I have, um, a Hurts board meeting tomorrow, I shall inquire.
Do they have a mattress in there, on the floor?
No, I don't think so, I think it was some wood, I don't know, them kids might have put some, something in there.
All right.
Because they're playing, they're having fun.
I seen it, I stopped the kid from going on the inside of the building.
Yeah, and when they bend one in there.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else, any other miscellaneous business? The mayor has entered the room, were you finished?
I'm finished with my report, but are we still on miscellaneous business?
Okay, uh, uh, you want to talk about the salaries?
Yeah.
Okay. In front of you, you should have what we talked about earlier, with the three different options for pay increase, so pull that out, please. Everyone have it, or did you all put, put it up? Ms. Mitchell, your, your, uh, question about the salary increase for village employees?
Yeah, my question is simply, what are we going to do, are we going to discuss this in September? Um, I mean, what, what are, what are we going to do? Because I think, I'm, I'm just kind of disappointed that we're just now discussing this, and had we done, as we discussed in the committee of the whole, had we done the appropriation the way we normally do when we work on the budget, then we could have talked about this earlier in the year. Um, but, so I'm just wondering, you know, is there legislation to follow in September, once we decide which one we want? Does a motion need to be made? What are we doing? I like option three, because we already know, um, that our funds that we have, we're working on a deficit budget anyway. And in twenty twenty-seven, the result is going to be in cutbacks, which means we still going to be affected in twenty twenty-six. So, and if we have, we're operating really at a deficit budget, I, I don't see where we can give anything, um, do anything with options one and two for five percent. And it would be great to give a three percent cost of living, but as we read, municipalities aren't mandated to give a COA. I mean, even if we have to reduce it to two percent, I just think we just need to talk about it, try to understand where we are. Even though, like I said, five percent was in the budget, but we need that other two percent probably to go somewhere else.
Uh, mayor, did, uh, anyone talk to you about those three different, uh?
Yes.
There's option one, two, and three?
Yes, Vice Mayor, um, I actually had talked to, um, the finance director, Mr. Key, and he informed me, um, with the different options, if we go at one or two, just know that in twenty twenty-seven, it probably would not be any raise at all. So, um, we just recently got this last week, so that's why you're just now getting it. But, um, what I was thinking, I know in the past, um, we've had a breakdown of what each individual, um, staff would make if it was a certain dollar amount of how much they make. Like wherever their salary is, what it would look like at three percent, what it would look like, and that's, that, that's, we did that actually when we were doing the seven, up to seven percent at that particular time, we haven't done that.
That was last year, two years? That was last year, two years ago, right?
Two years ago, yeah, just two years ago. So, if council would like to see the breakdown of what three percent or five percent looks like, we could get that. But, I do know we'll meet in August and some of the, uh, some of the, um, some of the, uh, staff, the one reason why Mr. Key thought it was necessary to at least give this information to council, they are coming up to their evaluations. So, it's, he mentioned about some evaluations taking place in September. So, if we don't decide on anything today, it's okay. But, he wanted council to know and, you know, and see the amounts because they, he does want to, um, get the evaluations done and with the new village manager coming, some of the evaluations, like himself, he would not be able to, uh, evaluate them because he doesn't know them. But, um, I did want to add, I know Mr. Williams is doing his evaluations for his staff and so they wanted to have a, a dollar amount attached or percent amount, um, uh, attached so we would know what they were looking at as far as, uh, rate of pay.
Well, it can be decided in August because we're going to have to have a special meeting.
Okay.
There for some things that we, uh, didn't get passed tonight, okay? We just have to come up with a date or you can come up with the date for that. Any other questions about, uh, the three options? So, you, if you have questions now, you can give them to, to Lisa and she can talk to the mayor, they can get an answer for you. Guess that made sense. Okay.
Okay.
Any other, Ms. Layans, yes?
Should we go back to the mayor's?
Yeah, well, I was looking through here to find the, uh, piece of legislation that has to do with Ms. Perkins and we, I didn't have anything to give to them. So, you can talk about it since you're here now.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the seventy-three?
Seventy-three.
So, when it comes...
How's your legislation seventy-three, please?
So, when it comes to Ms. Perkins, she has not given us a dollar amount. Um, I believe it was going to be as needed, but she hasn't gave us a dollar amount per hour.
Which, Mary can?
What is as needed? Is it during the day or in the evening?
In the evenings, in the evenings. And so, um, she would be, uh, doing some cross-training with the clerk of council until we decide actually what we're going to do at mayor's court. Um, we are looking to see if, um, when it comes to like warrants and citations and blocks, um, she's going to work with us so we can find out what happens along with the solicitor, what happens if we suspend mayor's court. So, she's going to be working with us on that too. But, she did meet with Ms. Randolph last week.
Okay, so that's one piece that we have to bring back to the special, uh, council meeting. There is, any questions on that?
Yes, so, so when you say that she's going to give us, um, her, her, um, her request for compensation, um, but did we have seventy-four that talks about five thousand dollars?
I don't think that, I don't think.
No, no, no. What I'm saying, because my question is if, you know, is that five thousand dollars going to cover, um, however long we're going to do that? I understand we may not use it all, but I would think that we ought to be offering her what we paid Vicki because we already have that allocated for the clerk of court. So, what did Vicki?
Um, I don't think so because she's not, she's not going to be here all day long. So, why?
No, no, but I'm saying by the hour, the hourly rate, what was our?
I won't know until I talk to her.
No, no.
We never, we haven't got.
Talk to, what is our hourly rate for, for the previous clerk of court? John would be able to figure that out, right?
I know the amount, I think it's, it was seventeen dollars an hour.
Okay. And so, is that something that, that we can offer her? Because I'm just saying, we, we're going to go... I just don't want to go over, over budget, you know?
I don't think we will. I don't think we're going to go over budget because if you're looking at one to two hours, um, and probably meeting like once a week or twice a week, I don't think you're going to go over because we're trying to... The way, um, we talk with her, um, it doesn't seem like she's going to have a lot of, spend a lot of time because it's in the evening, it's after she comes from her other job. So, with the cross-training, it just depends. Um, I know she just went through the formality of us getting, being able to get in the system, but, um, we're due to follow back up with her within the week and then I can come back and give you more information.
So, are we closing this out or we, we closing up? Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one. Do you guys have that rule of the mandatory four hours around here?
Hmm?
I never have.
No, I'm, I'm trying to be clear on what you're saying.
They, they get paid for four hours. Just because I showed up, I get four hours.
I don't, I don't think she's got, she wants, I think she's going to just contract on the hours that she's given. She didn't mention anything about four hours.
So, we're writing up... We're writing the contract up for her?
She would, she would, um, to my understanding, she would bill us like she did before. She was able to, and we were, uh, in the midst of in-between clerks before, uh, when Ms. Perkins came, she just sent us a invoice just like any other I-nine or contractors that we have. But, you know, you'll know the hour amount. She did, was unable to give us that amount yet, but I'm sure she'll be sharing that with us. So, when you have your special meeting, you'll have that information.
Yeah, I just...
But, it won't be four hours because it's in the evenings.
I, I think we are the ones that would should offer her the amount.
Right.
But, if she's contracting, she can decide how much she wants to, whether or not we want to do it or not.
Yeah. I'm sure you can compromise on that, so.
Yeah.
That's between, uh, you and, and her.
Correct, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, ma'am, not yet, not yet. I know you, you... Mr. Brown is here today. Come on up, Mr. Brown. You didn't think I was going to call your name today?
I did not, actually.
Mr. Gaines Brown the Third is here. We haven't seen you in a while.
It has been a while. It has been a while. I actually took the time to curate a few comments, um, just in the event that I was, uh, called up to provide any remarks or anything like that. Uh, so, before I even get started, I just want to say...
I've got three minutes.
I got three minutes, okay. All right, so, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Gaines Brown the Third and I just want to share, uh, a few remarks just so that way I can, uh, share my excitement, but also get out of the way because there are some things that have to be, um, hemmed up uh, before anything is, uh, formal. But, um, I'm truly humbled and honored in this moment standing before you all, uh, for a time such as this. Uh, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to each of you and for your confidence. And I'm humbled by this opportunity to serve and I'm committed to approaching, uh, this role with integrity, excellence, and respect for the community. In light of my current professional obligations, I'll keep my remarks brief, but I look forward to formally stepping into this role and working collaboratively to help move the village forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your state, state of the Lincoln Heights address. Thank you for, uh, coming out, uh, out tonight and of course, uh, the community and others will be able to see and hear you, uh, tonight. So, again, thank you. Okay? Ms. Baber?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Well, I couldn't second it, okay. It's been moved in second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye and get up and leave.
Aye.
Thank you. That was Ms. Baber.